Good evening. I'm going to call the June Council Meeting to Order now that Shane's got his system up here working in the nick of time. Thank you all for being here and those, welcome to those joining us from home or here in the audience. All members are present with, with the exception of Alder Person Dolan, who has been excused from this meeting. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent prayer in lieu of invocation. Invite you to please stand.
(Pledge of Allegiance) to the flag of the United States of America. Consider your public, worshiped, and honoration of God, and be grateful to the Lord.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting, which is attachments number one in your packets. You have a motion to accept by stack. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Perkey. Move into discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, take them out by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. That passes. Next item on our agenda is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so this evening on an agenda item that appears in front of us, in which you'll be invited to the podium by a council member. We ask that if you do wish to speak that you introduce yourself and make sure the microphone is on for those watching at home or for the recording to be viewed at a later date. Item number six is my report. Good evening, Alder Person, city staff, and residents here or watching from home. As with each month's report, I highlight many of the items, some that are more important than others, I feel, that cross my desk or that I partake in following the last common council meeting. This past month marked the start of yet another effort to restore activity and generate investment in the downtown and waterfront areas. As part of our selected design consultant, SuperMass Studios' visit earlier this month, a variety of meetings and interactions occurred. SuperMass came to Wisconsin Rapids to meet with various groups representative of our city in an attempt to understand interests and gain a perspective on various aspects of the project, and I'm happy to report that the meetings were a critical piece to understanding and securing support for the initiative. I think in many ways, their first visit was a major success and a step forward in one aspect of planning with the design of the riverbank. Another unique element of the visit was their night seeing event, which we kicked off here on Wednesday from their visit at 8:30 at night just a couple of weeks ago, inviting the community to hear and share ideas about bringing energy and life in the downtown riverfront environment during the nighttime hours, and then experience an up-close look at the possibilities during an evening walk along the waterfront. The event was conducted by Lenny Schwendinger, a renowned lighting designer and artist with engineering firm Era. At the event, those in attendance were offered insights on the impact of lighting by pointing out the effects of existing lighting choices and envisioning the opportunities for enhancements and inviting residents to take a critical look at lighting options and express their preferences through the process. Thanks to the impressive spirit of the commitment displayed by those who attended, we had over 40 community members present for that walk that evening with SuperMass, that really is apparent that the process will be, will continue to be exciting as we continue to experience and enhance our public spaces both that day and for the night. I continue to agree with residents and support those who see the vision to make the Wisconsin Rapids Downtown Central Business District truly a centerpiece of which we all can be proud of. There will be more information forthcoming as to future visits and future opportunities for public engagement in their work. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to attend Smart Growth America's 2015 Local Leaders Policy Forum. The event provided an excellent opportunity for mayor's county officials and council members to share and exchange strategies for rebuilding local assets and promoting healthy and vibrant communities. This year's forum focused on three main areas, which come to no surprise, downtown center-city revitalization, expanding housing choice, and creating healthy neighborhoods. The forum discussion sessions were insightful and directly applicable for our city in the creation of our livable, walkable communities that increase economic vibrancy. Economic development and success are reliant upon the support and strategic vision that the city and our city council and our community's many stakeholders come together and provide. The city, in coordination with stakeholders from these sectors, play a vital role in redevelopment efforts to support our economic entertainment and recreational opportunities. Numerous discussions surrounding healthy communities and downtown revitalization evidence impactful strategies that can be utilized for fostering a successful downtown district and, in our case, also the adjacent waterfront. The inclusion of diverse housing, as well as our city-led and supportive efforts, are reoccurring themes to success in these communities. The event also included a mixer of developers who are interested in developing communities who have a center-city development mindset. Two developers, in fact, expressed interest in learning more of our project and requested to stay in the loop. Many of the ideas shared had a strong connection to recent strategies undertaken with the selection of SuperMass. In each case, there was a potential, there was potential seen by city leaders, just like the tremendous potential here, in leveraging community and economic development investments that will support creative and practical design to making our riverfront a destination for, and a larger asset in many cases, for times to come. Other items worth noting include, here on May 21st, IAN members of the Airport Commission held a public forum to inform the public and adjacent property owners surrounding the area, the airport, of our continued efforts to maintain compliance with airport runway approaches. Property owners asked many questions and took away answers about how they might be affected. A video was made of the event and is available if you or citizens have questions on the event. Just as an FYI, there is future survey work planned to understand specific airspace intrusion along the airport. On May 22nd, I presented on a panel with Mayor Becker from Salt Lake City via a webinar, which is unique, from my phone. You weren't actually in the room with these folks, but you got to speak on the U.S. Department of Transportation Mayor's Challenge for Safer People, Safer Streets, where I highlighted recent initiatives and accomplishments the community has undergone surrounding complete streets, our bicycle and pedestrian routes and trails, and the Get Active program and our work here connected with that in the city and our downtown development with safe and walkable principles. On May 24th, my brief interview with Wisconsin Public Radio aired on applying for a DNR Stewardship Grant and challenges in how that relates to the governor and the legislature's proposed budget and our, really, our chances of being successful within that. I also took a tour on of Wisconsin Dehydration, which opened their operations in the Westside Industrial Park just a year ago. They've hired up to, they're up to 14 people to date, and I'll be sharing this visit and the details of their company and a future community update in the near future. Also continue to support the League of Wisconsin Municipalities in their efforts to advocate for an increase in state funding for local transportation and to oppose Wisconsin Legislature's major changes to that of how room tax allocations are dispersed and the challenges that'll deliver for municipalities in deciding what the, how they allocate room tax. Also to note, News Channel 7 is featuring Wisconsin Rapids in their, in this week's Your Town program. In addition to filming live on location right here at this very moment, I believe in Village of Beeren, they'll be filming live from Wisconsin Rapids on Thursday at Winterfield. And this Thursday, it kind of comes at a great time for them to be in town, marks the start of the Cranberry Blossom Fest, set to run through Sunday as it has done in previous years. It features more than 20 events, live music, cranberry blossom tours, culinary treats, and of course, the parade. Some of the featured events take place, Downtown Cinema Under the Stars, the June Dairy and Berry Breakfast, Stop By and Say Hello, and my couple-hour shift on Friday morning, the Cranberry Blossom Fest Parade, of course, as I mentioned, and then the Carnival, which will be returning to many people's delight for the full weekend, and encourage residents to check out blossomfest.com for more information on that. And finally, this month, we say goodbye to our Assumption Student Observer, Cody Royac. We thank Cody for his continued participation in city activities, such as the formation of the Mayor's Youth Council, and attendance here at our meetings. Commend you for your efforts to learn and expose yourself to city government, and encourage you to always remember Wisconsin Rapids. I think you will. Your dad's at your meeting, at our meetings quite often, and we thank Roy for staying involved and engaged as well, and we hope that you'll continue, consider coming back to apply your talents here. And look forward to our new Assumption Representative, Jake Wenzloff, who is also a member of the Mayor's Youth Council, who I believe will join us next month. And as always, I hope folks have a fine value and understanding of sampling what my weeks consist of, and always make a plug for my community update, which will have a lot of updates coming forth that we've been working on over the last couple of weeks. Cody, you want to speak a little bit about your experience, maybe, or share some words?
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank you for having the student observers on the city council. I have learned many interesting things while observing. My replacement for the Assumption High School student representative is Jake Wenzloff. Unfortunately, Jake is not able to be here tonight as he is currently at Badger Boys State, learning how government functions at city, county, and state levels. I know he will be as interested as I was in the city council meetings. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me be the Assumption High School observer.
Next item on our agenda is the presentation of an award for Mission Lifeline to our fire department. Deputy Chief is here, and will step up to the front, and then he's going to tell us a little bit about the award.
We received a Mission of Lifeline Award for 2014. The award pertains to patients having an active heart attack. It's strictly from the field to a cath lab, and there's a certain timeframe we have to meet, 90-minute window, from the time we arrive at the patient's side to the time the affected vessel is opened up. So we have about 70 minutes with the patient to deliver him to the cath lab. With that said, last year, we had six patients from the field that we delivered to the cath lab. Just as importantly is, the six that we had, there's probably three to four times as many that arrived in the emergency department that we take from the emergency department to the cath lab. We're not allowed to count those patients towards this award, for whatever reason. This is pre-hospital from the field, 911 calls from the residents to the cath lab. With that said, I'd like to recognize key individuals for this award. Our EMTs, they're tasked with a lot during these calls, their hands are full, they're very busy, they have a lot of procedures and prep work to do and medications to administer, a lot of it during transport to cath lab, with the ultimate goal getting to the cath lab in 70 minutes. So the cardiologist can provide a catheterization and open the affected artery up to allow perfusion back to the heart. When that happens in the 90-minute timeframe, the patient's survivability is around 98 percent, the high, upper 90 percent range. More importantly, the majority of patients can return to a quality lifestyle, and by that, I mean, we hope they can maintain a lifestyle they had pre-cardiac incident, so they can do things that they did prior to the heart attack without being disabled. So we're very proud of the service we provide to the community, and, you know, you've heard many times, we think we do an excellent job, but I think this award is a symbol. Secondly, a group of people I'd like to recognize is the financial decision-makers for the city, the mayor's, past and present, finance director, and past and present Alder Persons. Without your support of our service, programs like this wouldn't be able to take place, and we wouldn't be able to provide the level of care we do to the community. We're very proud of what we do, and hopefully it reflects on the community in the care that we provide and being able to do interventions like this. So again, Chief Kirkman and I would just like to thank everyone, our EMTs and key city staff members. If you have any questions about the award, I'd be glad to talk to you later, but that's a quick overview.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions at the moment? Otherwise, we congratulate the department on their success and obviously the investment as you had indicated that the city makes to make that possible. Thank you. Item eight is the report of the Planning Commission meeting held June 1st. That was actually separate from your packets this evening. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on June 1st in the first-floor conference room here at City Hall. The first order of business was the approval of the report from the May 4 meeting. There was a motion and a second to approve that report, and that motion carried. There were no other maps or plots received from that meeting. Item three was action on Plan 150769, SC Swiderski LLC. Chris Cartt, who represented SC Swiderski, was present and proposed the 56-unit development at 731 32nd Street North. Adam Teigen presented the staff recommendation conditions of approval, which included a total of 56 multifamily units and accessory detached garages are permitted by this approval and shall be in substantial conformance with the layout plan and elevation submitted by the applicant. Exterior siding shall feature a minimum of three materials and styles to minimize the monotony of building facades. The second condition was all new off-street parking and vehicle use areas shall be surfaced with asphalt or concrete. Item three is any lighting, including security lighting, shall be installed to direct the light away from adjacent residential and vacant properties and shall comply with Section 110711. Item four was side and rear boundaries of dumpster areas shall be screened with sight obscuring fencing and landscaping. And condition five was compliance with all other applicable codes and ordinances. Adam also noted that Chapter 6 of the municipal code requires that sidewalk be installed along 32nd Street North in conjunction with this project. There was a motion by Perkey and a second by Aaron to approve the plan based on the aforementioned conditions with the siding color change fulfilling one of three exterior siding material styles conditions, and that motion carried. There was a motion to adjourn at 4:18, and that motion carried. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding the report of the Planning Commission meeting held June 1st? Motion, is there a second? Motion by Raum, second by Coe, to approve the report. Move into discussion. Any discussion? Seeing no requests to speak, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven a's and zero n's.
Item nine on our agenda is Standing Council Committee Reports. Item A, the Finance and Property Committee meeting held June 2nd.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Property Committee met at 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 2nd, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All members present, and a list of others attending is on file in the office office. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Number one, number two, a request for Class A liquor and beer license filed by Baker Drives Food Incorporated, Merlin Jeffrey Agent doing business as Quality Foods IJ for the premises at 1811 Baker Drive. It was moved in second to approve the Class A liquor license, motion carried. Number three, request for a Class A beer license filed by Shopko Stores Operating Company, Dan Cooney Agent doing business at Shopko. Number 12 for the premises at 1100 East Riverview Expressway. It was moved in second to approve the Class A beer license, motion carried. Number four, a request from Josh Patron of Johnny's Rapids Inn, 2610 8th Street South for a three-day alcohol license premise extension to include the area west of their building to the westerly property line and the north-south property lines on July 17th from 9:00 PM to July 18th at 2:30 AM, and at July 18th from 9:00 PM to July 19th at 2:30 AM for a water ski weekend event. The request also includes the use of amplification speakers and noise ordinance variants for the live music. It was moved and seconded to approve the three-day alcohol license premise extension to include the area west of their building to the westerly property line and the north-south property lines on July 17th from 9:00 PM to July 18th at 2:30, and from July 18th, 9:00 PM to July 19th at 2:30 AM for the water ski weekend event, motion carried. Number five, a request for a Class B liquor and beer license filed by Karen's Weinsenstein's LLC, Karen Hopperman Agent doing business as Karen's Weinsenstein's for the premises at 821 Pepper Avenue. It was moved and seconded to approve the Class B liquor license for 821 Pepper Avenue, the motion carried. A request from Karen's Weinsenstein's LLC, Karen Hopperman Agent doing business as Karen's Weinsenstein's to transfer a Class B liquor and beer license from the premises located at 821 Pepper Avenue to the premises located at 160 First Street North, with a transfer taking place during the period of August 1st to August 31st, 2015, with a three-day notice of the transfer date being given to the city clerk. It was moved and seconded to approve, for approval of the Karen's Weinsenstein's transfer license from premises 821 Pepper Avenue to premises located at 160 First Street North during the period of August 1st to August 31st, motion carried. Number seven, a request from Shane Blazer, city clerk, to amend the special events policy to include a provision for staff approval of reoccurring events if they are unchanged. It was moved and seconded to approve a provision that allows for staff approval of events after the second annual, as long as there is no significant change, motion carried, see attachment one. Number eight, final review and approval of the 2015 to 2016 liquor, beer, wine license applications. It was moved and seconded to approve the 2015 to 2016 licenses, the motion carried. It was moved and seconded to approve the license for the new body shop contingent upon them paying their personal property taxes, the motion carried. Number nine, revisions to Chapter 14 Building Code, Chapter 15 Plumbing Code, Chapter 16 Gas Equipment Code, and Chapter 17 Electric Code and Building Permit Fees. It was moved and seconded to approve the codes and fee changes as proposed by city, or by staff, including the changes excluding the changes to Section 1511-5 pertaining to the sanitary drain backflow protection, motion carried. A request from Adam Teigen, Planning and Economic Development Director, for a 2015 funding request for a regional economic growth initiative. It was moved and seconded to approve the funding for Regi at $20,716, motion carried. Number 11, presentation of the city's 2014 audit report by Shank SC. It was moved and seconded to approve the 2014 audit, motion carried. Number 12 is resolution amending the 2015 budget, which is listed below. It was moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, the motion carried. Number 13, beverage operator license applications. It was moved and seconded to approve licenses for all the following new applicants, motion carried. It was moved and seconded to approve the renewal licenses for all the following applicants, motion carried. There were no applicants, or there was no applications recommended denied by the police chief. Number 14, audit of the bills. It was moved and seconded to pay the bills, vouchers, 59, 59,515 to 59,886, the motion Number 15, it was moved and seconded to adjourn, the meeting adjourned at 6:18 PM. With that, I'd move to accept the Finance and Property Committee report.
A motion by Steck, have to approve the report, is a second by Royal, excuse me. Now move into discussion. Alder Person Raum, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, item 10, and I'm not, I just want to thank Adam for getting back to me. I had several questions, I'd emailed them, and I got satisfied with the answer, but I added one. What do you foresee as our contribution in the future to be? Any guess, guess?
Well, it definitely would be a guess, because I don't know where it will go, but I think the desire of the Regi Board at this point was looking for some sort of commitment for a three-year funding level at what has been requested, which is at $20,716, and that was really to get things off the ground and running. And then the goal of Regi and the new president when he is on board is to expand the funding for that entity to bring in nonprofit money and business money, utility money, those type of things, to try and offset any investments from the city or the other municipalities. The goal is to diversify work that funding stream is doing.
Your Honor? Adam, could you just go into, I guess, for the public that's on TV, what Regi is in a short way, if you can?
I can certainly try, and not throw him under the bus, but John Burgen, who is the Chair of the Regi Board is here as well. If I miss anything, I would obviously ask him to step in as well. But the, Regi stands for the Regional Growth, Regional, wow, can't talk to me. The Regional Economic Growth Initiative, and in a nutshell, what it is, is it's a desire to have a regional entity that is responsible for economic development. And when I'm referencing economic development, that's encompassing not only working with our existing businesses to make sure they have what they need, number one, to stay open, and number two, to ideally expand and thrive within our community, but also to be that forward-facing entity that goes out and is the public face of our region trying to attract additional investment and companies coming to this area. And not to say that it would pass a super wide net and try and attract, be doing smokestack chasing, as they call it, but really to be targeted in the type of companies that we'd be looking to attract to this area. One of the main things that has come out of discussions within our region is that there's not a entity that is dedicated full-time to economic development. There's a lot of pieces here and there. There's obviously some capacity within the city, some capacity within the county, some capacity with other municipalities, but there's not that full-time individual. So ultimately, that is the goal of Regi, is to have that entity and to ultimately make this local economy grow.
Last sentence, if I may. And maybe I missed it, Adam, but this includes the communities of Southwood County, northern Adams County and that, so it's not, not just Wisconsin Rapids and others are contributing as was decided upon how it was going to be done. So that's all, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank Adam for getting back to me and maybe talk about it a little bit for the viewing public.
Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, I will point out, just a clarification, I know I had sent all you a memo regarding item nine on the agenda on their, on their report, and that was the revisions to the code. There was a report that was printed erroneously, and I think the public obviously caught it because they had contacted many of you, probably myself, as well as Adam, about that, and it was incorrect, so I hope that that clarified for anybody that had any issues with the report. And it was not the Daily Tribune, as Karen had asked, you know, if there was any of their reporting, it was not, so I will indicate that to, as a clarification. Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven a's and zero n's.
Thank you. Item 9B on our report this evening, on our agenda this evening is a Public Works Committee meeting held June 2nd. Alder Person Raum.
Thank you again, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:22 PM on June 2nd, 2015, in the first-floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alder Person Dolan and Joe Isted. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, review and consider approval of the 2016 public hearing rates and 2015 rates to the owners. There was a motion as second to accept the 2016 public hearing rates and 2015 rates to owners as presented. The motion carried, that's attachment one in our packet. Item three, the 2015 project schedule was reviewed. Item four, referral list was reviewed, and we removed that from 2015, number 21. Item five, a motion to adjourn and a second, the motion carried, the meeting adjourned at 6:42 PM. With that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
A motion to approve by Raum, is there a second? Second by Kellogg, move into discussion. Is there any discussion on the report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven As and zero Ns.
Item 9C is the Human Resources Committee meeting held June 2nd. Alderperson Perky?
Yes, thank you. On June 2nd, 2015, the Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 PM, and first item on our list was to call to order, and it was called to order at 4:00 PM. Second item on the list was to review and approve the 2016 health and dental insurance plan renewal, which includes renewing with Security Administrative Services for claims processing, Delta Dental for dental coverage, and a stop-loss coverage provider. The motion was made and seconded to renew the stop-loss coverage with ACE and to renew the dental insurance plan with Delta Dental. That motion passed. The committee will meet again to review the contract with Security Administrative Services for claims processing. Item three was to discuss and approve the elimination of pay for the appointed deputy clerk in deputy treasurer positions. Following a discussion, a motion was made and seconded to eliminate the pay for appointed deputy clerk in deputy treasurer positions effective July 1st, 2015. That motion passed. Item four was an update from Police Chief Hoyer on the status of physical assessments for police officers. Because of various fitness plans now being considered by, of course, for staff training, the committee will meet with Chief Hoyer again on Tuesday, July 7th, 2015, to discuss this progress of the physical assessments for the police officers program. Item five was to adjourn, and the committee adjourned at 4:55 PM. With this, I would move for adoption of the Human Resources Committee report.
A motion to approve by Perky, is there a second? Second by Coth? Move into discussion. Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven As and zero Ns.
Thank you. Item 10 is on our report is miscellaneous reports. Item one is the Southwood County Airport Commission meetings held May 21st and June 4th. Item two is the Water Works and Lighting Commission meeting held May 13th. Item three, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly organizational summary for May. Item four, the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority meetings held April 29th and May 27th. Item five, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department monthly report for May. Item six, the Police and Fire Commission meeting held May 13th. Item seven, the City Treasurers monthly report for May. Item eight, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held June 3rd. And item nine, the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees held May 20th. Council members, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make a motion to accept and place on file.
A motion to accept by Perky, second by Kellogg. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak on the reports? Seeing none, I'll make one comment regarding the Airport Commission meeting. It's been a lot of airport activity, let me tell you, over the last number of weeks. There is another special meeting scheduled for Thursday regarding some of the situations out at Alexander Field, one of which regarding the FBO process, in which we've issued our request for proposals for folks to administer or really operate the FBO. Encourage anyone with questions or discussion about that process to reach out, but one of many meetings we'll be having over the next six weeks out at the airport. With that, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven As and zero Ns.
Item 11, items for new business at the July 21st council meeting. There's nothing listed. I do anticipate at least one item coming forth that likely will be an item that I might request a committee, the whole, to be considered. Item 12 is referral communication to committees. Are there any referrals to committees? Alderperson Raome, please.
One, and right now, I can't find the paperwork how it's written, but if we could do a study of the truck routes within the city and markings that are for them, Alderperson Coth brought that forward. I don't know if he has more to say right now. We can get it worded, I guess, how we want it on the agenda, but, and put it on our next committee meeting.
Okay. Are there any other items for consideration by committee? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion, is there a second? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you all for being here and for joining us.